And Youth Councilmember Smith, we're excited to have you. Thanks for joining us. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. We've asked Councilmember Saxton to start us off with a moment of silence and then lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Councilmember?
Can we, oh, wait. There we go. Moment of silence. Thanks. Thank you. No scout troop, I guess. So, could I get the audience rise and turn to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, let us go ahead and we'll address the consent items. We have the approval for the February 6, 2018 city council minutes. Any comments, changes, recommendations to those minutes?
Now, Mayor might like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the February 6, 2018 council minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, let us move into some action items. We have the opportunity to review and appoint a new Roy City Recorder. Counsel, I'd like to introduce to you for your consideration an appointment, Ms. Morgan Langhall. Thank you. Okay, counsel, comments? Okay?
I'd like her to introduce herself to us a little bit.
Yep, and if I can, I just want to kind of talk about this for just a minute. So, we had about 25 applicants for this position. You know, sometimes it's kind of hard to look at an applicant based off of a resume and an application. So, what Andy and I did was we just decided, you know what, let's interview every single one of them. So, we did. So, we took two days. They were two full days and we interviewed everyone. Morgan definitely was the one that stood out. And she's got some good background. She's got some good experience in this type. And so, we made an offer to her. Morgan gladly accepted. So, as the mayor says, and as a recorder, that's kind of the mayor's appointment as well. So, I talked with the mayor and I said, hey, I think I've got someone. Are you okay? And he says, yep, let's do it. So, we did hire Morgan. So, now comes the time that we have to appoint. But we also have to swear her in as the city recorder. And we have Mandy that is going to swear Morgan in. So, if we want to go to that point. And then, like Councilman Yeoman says, we can have her kind of introduce her family and then Morgan can speak for a few minutes.
Before we do that, I'd make the motion that we approve Morgan Langhall as a Roy City Recorder.
Correct. Because we do need that advice on this end of the decision.
Do I have a motion to recommend appointment?
I'll second.
There, okay.
Do I have a second? Okay.
Who made the motion first?
Dave.
Dave made the motion?
Brian did the second.
Okay. I think this is an all in favor. Is that right, Andy?
It is.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it's official. Great to have you, Morgan. Okay?
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, Morgan Langhall. Having been elected or appointed to...
Having...
Do I have to repeat that?
Yeah.
Having been elected or appointed to...
The office of executive assistant?
The office of executive assistant.
City reporter?
City reporter.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah?
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
With fidelity.
Morgan, would you introduce family you might have here?
My husband, he's here.
Okay, welcome. Okay.
Do you want to tell us just a little bit about yourself, where you're from?
Yeah, I grew up out in Plain City.
Okay.
To Fremont High School and then to Weber State. And then, I live in North Dogged now with my husband and our two daughters and then our dog and our cat and wonderful.
Okay, welcome to Roy City.
Welcome, Lauren. Okay, it's great to have you. Thank you. Okay, Chief, please.
Mayor, counsel, we've filled another position with the police department. We're in the enviable position within the state, I think, that we're actually picking and choosing instead of just scrambling for bodies, which, you know, as I've said before, that's thanks to the actions you've taken over the last few years. The individual that we've hired is Brian Freeman. He comes to us, he worked for Clinton for six years, and then decided to go into a private business. Decided he didn't really like that, missed being a police officer. So, he went to the Weber County Sheriff's Office. And then, when we had an opening, we're now the destination instead of the training ground. And so, he came to us. So, we've got Brian Freeman with just over six years of experience and we're really glad to have him. Our guys know him from being in Clinton and we're really happy to have him. So, I'd like to have him come forward.
Perfect, thanks, Chief. Excellent. Okay, Morgan, if you'd like to swear him in?
Yes. Don't look at me, I told our best.
I told him I can only do like three words at a time. Okay, perfect.
All right, I state your name.
I, Brian Freeman.
Having been elected?
Having been elected.
Or appointed to?
Or appointed to.
The office of?
The office of.
Police officer?
Police officer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah?
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And I will discharge the duties?
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity?
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you.
Brian's been with us two weeks already. So, he's already worked full shift today.
Okay.
We've got him out there and we'll have him back on his own here real soon.
Brian, do you have the family here you'd like to introduce?
Well, I'm surprised I do.
Perfect, please.
Well, I wasn't expecting to be here. Mandy let me know three hours ago, so.
Whatever.
My dad, Richard.
Okay.
My dad's Carson. My nephew, my niece, Taylor, my mom Nancy.
And Diane, which is my sister.
And Diane, which is a real good friend of mine that I grew up in Roy. And she saw it. And so, she's like, I gotta show up. So, I had to go to Roy, which was way off.
Yeah, it's perfect.
So, I've got four children. I live in West Haven. Like Chief says, I've been in law enforcement for a while. Had the opportunity to work with Chief Perry as well in Davis County. And I know a ton of the officers. I know the city real well. Grew up here, went to Roy High.
Perfect.
And this guy right here.
We won't hold that against you.
We won't hold that against you.
I think I ought to get that out of the way.
Yeah.
Really happy to be here, letting you know to retire here. Really, that's kind of what Chief and so like what he's doing here, what you guys have done. So, that's kind of what drew me to be here with you guys.
Excellent.
No, that's great to hear.
Brian, welcome aboard.
Welcome back.
It's good to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, Chief, are you talking about the Resolution 18-6?
Yes, we've been working on this resolution, this mutual operation agreement with the strike force. We've been working on it about three years between different members throughout the county wanting this change and that change. And we finally got it all put together and most of the cities have signed it and we're ready to sign it. It doesn't really change anything that we've been doing. It's operating the way we have been. We'll still have one individual committed as a full-time agent there. It's a great force multiplier for us and it's something that we've always benefited from, from being a member of. And I think it's, you know, it's what we've been needing.
Excellent, excellent. Counsel, comments, questions? Okay, having seen none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 18-6.
Order?
Resolution 18-6, approving agreement for law enforcement, narcotics and gay strike force.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, this is a roll call vote?
All right, Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
And Councilmember Yeoman?
Yeoman.
Yeoman.
Yeah, aye.
Thank you, excellent. Okay, consideration of ordinance number 18-6. Jason, Andy, who's talking this one?
I'll do this one, Mayor.
Okay.
And Mayor, this ordinance grants a utility franchise and a utility easement to Rocky Mountain Power. And Steve Rush should be here any minute. I told him we wouldn't be to that prior to 6:15. I was wrong. But maybe I can explain a little bit about the agreement. He likes to come here just in case you have any questions. We've had agreements with him before in the past. This is a 10-year agreement and it gives them the right to construct and maintain their facilities in the streets so that all of our citizens get power. I think I mentioned, it's non-exclusive because we have other people who also get an easement to, you know, to provide utilities. We made sure that the city's not responsible for any damages or injuries that could be caused by their actions in the city. So, we had to take care of that. There's certain provisions that if they're required to make a move, it's not at their cost and not at all at the city's cost. However, there are certain times where some things made by a private development that comes in and the private development pays for those costs and they're to be able to recover those costs through that private development. So, those are some of the things. And like you indicated to me, Mr. Rush just came in in the back. I told him I told you not to be here until 6:15 and I was wrong. But he's here in case you have any questions on this agreement. And if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain those questions. We've been working on this for several months and these agreements are always kind of complicated. But they're, in some ways, it's pretty typical of what every other city has.
Okay, there was just some discussion briefly about Section 10.
Yes, and what I'm asking for in this is that you approve this agreement conditioned upon my arriving at a negotiation that's satisfactory to me on Section 10.
Okay.
It's not... We're working on some language that would be satisfactory to the city. It's not of grave concern, but I think we have that pretty much worked out. So, and we should have that worked out hopefully by tomorrow morning.
Okay, counsel, comments, questions?
I just have, so, haven't we always had a agreement with Rocky Mountain as far as the easements go?
We have.
So, is this something that has to be just updated?
Yeah, it has to be. Like, this is a 10-year agreement. Off the top of my head, I can't remember how long our agreement was before.
Okay.
We'll have an agreement that'll come before you with Questar we're working on right now.
Okay.
And now it's Dominion.
Okay.
But that'll be coming forward. But they have different terms, these agreements.
Well, and it's good. Things change and so, every 10 years. Okay, that's perfect.
Perfect.
Mayor, I make a motion that we consider ordinance number 18-6 granting an electrical utility franchise and general utility easement to Rocky Mountain Power with conditions that Section 10 is met satisfactory on the attorney's word.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
And Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we're going to go into public hearing to discuss the request to amend the general plan. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing for an open conversation about amending the general plan associated with property approximately 4060 and 4088 South Midland Drive. Steve, would you like to start the conversation?
I would. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Unfortunately, we have a technical difficulty, so I can't give you my presentation that I typically give you. But fortunately, all of you already have that within your staff report anyway. It was more for the audience's benefit to see what really is going on. Again, this is just at that commercial development there on Midland and 4,000 South. Currently has the McDonald's and the Jiffy Lube and dentist office and stuff. And this is just kind of for the back portions of it. There are several acres out there that are currently vacant. The property owner has been trying for 10 years to bring in development. The issue they're running into is it's too small for big box, too big for small box. And the medium size don't want to be that far away from the street. So, the area that's being requested to be rezoned is kind of that area that's too far back. They were patient with the city when we were doing the Focus Roy Plan to see if what would come out of that and sense of what should development be, where should it be and how should it be. Within that plan, as most of you know, it really talked about areas around the front-runner station and downtown. But there was a section, if you look at your staff report and the conformance of the general plan, is Recommendation 1.3, it talks about the application of mixed-use zone and other commercial areas along major corridors and transit routes within Roy. Midland Drive is a transit, does have transit there. Midland Drive is also a large car-moving facility. As much as we don't want to say it, 4,000 is also as well, even though it's a city road. The Planning Commission did have a public hearing and they opened it up. And again, all the comments that came out or within the staff report, most were just concerned about what type of development would be coming, you know, heights and stuff like that. So, when the Planning Commission, and I do apologize, I failed to put this within it, when the Planning Commission recommended approval for both the general plan amendment and the rezone request, they made a stipulation or caveat saying it could only be developed as townhomes, not apartments. That was, again, was the concern that those that spoke had that concern that all of a sudden they'd get a four or five-story apartment complex right next to them. When they were told that it might be more townhomes, they seemed to be okay with that. So, again, the Planning Commission recommends approval of both the amendment to the general plan from commercial to very high-density residential and the zoning map from commercial CC to R4 multifamily.
Okay, any questions for Steve before we continue open public meeting? Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, anybody else would like to address the counsel on this issue? If you do, just need your name and address, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, just state your name and address. Thank you.
Julie Little, 2966 West, 4275 South. When I came to the Planning Commission, one thing, it said high-density housing, not very high-density. So, there's still my concern with the agenda because, yeah, the Planning Commission said, well, you know, townhomes. I feel better about townhomes because high-density means, to me, apartments, and I'd rather not apartments. We're all residential behind there and also to the south. The other problem is all the traffic. It's kind of, I mean, it's, right now, it's bad with the commercial, but you add more homes and trying to get out onto 4,000, I don't know how the road would be, but even 4,000 onto Midland Drive is hard. So, those are my concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would feel comfortable about making your comments? Okay, having seen none, okay, take a motion to close public hearing?
Mayor, make motion that we go out of public hearing?
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're now out of public hearing. Counsel, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, Mayor, this is not a good thing for Roy City. I mean, anytime you take away from the footprint of commercial, you're just ruining any potential tax base that the city might come. We are a built-out city and the more we treat that as just a bad business all the way around. Also, that neighborhood isn't fit for high-density housing, okay? It should either be commercial, if not commercial, most even should be considered a single family because that is continuous right next to that subdivision, in my opinion. If you really take a look at things, I, we have something similar like this down in Triple Stop. You look down there, you look at the buildings. To me, in my opinion, again, it just looks out of its place. It just doesn't belong there. It never should have been there, but it got built and got approved. And you really need to take a look at that neighborhood with a multifamily, even if it is condominiums, townhomes, doesn't make that fit in there. In my opinion, it doesn't. So, for those reasons, I don't like it.
I would agree with everything that was just stated.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. We just recently, you know, approved a few years ago some townhome condominiums type thing. And that, you know, area was kind of the way the road was cut off, you know, adjacent for commercial to go in. However, this area here, I think it really needs to stay commercial because I think there's more potential for that in the future. I mean, I understand the proponent who owns the acreage, has waited 10 years and couldn't find somebody to do it. However, I mean, that's, at this time right now, there's been so much talk with West Haven and what they're possibly doing, you know, across the street. And I think that it just needs to stay at this time just commercial and not make any changes. I think we'd be losing some bit of good property at that time to go ahead and make a high density.
Okay, other thoughts, comments?
I mean, that might be an area for, if you were going to do it, maybe mixed-use. But even at that, if you were going to do mixed-use, I'd say a good portion commercial with a small portion residential. But I agree, it's something that needs to stay primary commercial.
Yeah.
Other thoughts?
I would agree.
Okay, further comments? Do I have a motion to, this one gets a little tricky. Do I have a motion basically to, with, to basically not consider the amending the general plan?
To deny.
Motion to deny ordinance number 18-4.
There it is.
And if we don't have a motion at all, it just doesn't...
It just dies without a, without a thing.
I motion if we don't have a...
Yes.
Oh, you have a question, Mayor?
Please. Typically, in the public hearing is the best time, but in light of the fact is, is that we surely want to vent any information. I'm willing to go back into public hearing. Or do you? Okay. Let's do this. Yeah, that's fine.
Want me to make a motion to go back into public hearing?
He's actually probably pretty close to, do you have, you a property owner or has some direct involvement in this? Okay. I think you probably it'd be best if we did hear from you before we take a vote. So, if you'd like to step at the microphone, give us your name and address. This is a little unusual.
Do we need to open a public hearing?
I make a motion to go back into public hearing?
I'll second.
Okay, let's do that then, just to keep official. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back into public hearing. Go ahead and make a comment.
Reed Swenson Alpine, Utah. We are the property owners. We do have people who are local here that have expressed interest in purchasing that, one for possibly a care center, which is part of the, still approved through the commercial. You know, the thing, it is a box corner. It is, the thing we've looked at and we've developed a lot of properties over the 40 years. We find that a good mixture, and there is an argument, and there has been, that the commercial, but house tops drives commercial and the more house tops you have. And I know you've gone back and forth on that. This is a very high-class place. And personally, if it was me, I'd rather have townhomes. We lined them up so they don't face anybody in the back. I'd rather have townhomes than I'd rather have a commercial property. And you can argue how much type of traffic goes with commercial and how much type of traffic goes with residential. And sometimes they, depends on what type of commercial it is and stuff, sometimes they can cause even more of a bottleneck at times than this. And this, and when you say high-density, high-density is sometimes three and four times what you're, we're proposing, 12 units per acre. If you look at some of the corridor places that go down through where the tracks runs, it's 40 and 50, 60 sometimes units per acre. So, this is kind of a medium density. And it's proposed to be a two-story, not high with double-car garages, almost like residential and maybe sold as residential. I think that's what these people who are proposing, have talked to us, would like to do is, is more make it a sale as a residential home. And so, I think it ties in well. If I was a resident, I'd rather have townhomes behind me than some type of commercial property. And again, it still gives us, we've had some, you know, McDonald's, a lot of nice type of commercial people come in there. But it still gives us over 24, 25,000 square feet of commercial. It kind of ties it in well. So, you know, in terms of their proposal, as I've viewed, I think it's a very nice mix to go from residential, medium-density, townhomes, again, could be residential, and then move into a commercial strip that I think would do well. So, that's our proposal. We've talked, I wasn't here last time, I was out of town, but my partner talked to several people here. And like I say, we want to, we want to be a good mix, but we propose that that is a good mix. We've done it in many cities and many places and that's turned out very well. As you move from residential to a median-density units, not apartments, and then from there to commercial seems to be a good mix. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
You alluded to the care center. What were you referring to there?
These people have done care centers. They've worked for Roy City on a number of occasions. They actually live here in this area, one of the Ginno's. So, they're the ones that pursued it with us to look at this. And, you know, they're very interested in this area, again, a resident in this area. And I think Roy City and the people who work with them on other projects are very happy with them. So, it's a very high-class group of people who are proposing this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Please.
How many units per acre are you talking with townhomes?
12 units per acre is the highest density that Roy proposes. And that's, and 12 units per acre is medium-density. It's not high-density. You can go up to the other towns and you can see these three and four-story buildings and that's high-density. Sometimes they're two and three times what Roy's proposing.
And how many acreage is that?
It's 6.6, 6 and 3/4 acre, or 6 and 1/2 acres. Is a total acreage it's proposed. We've got a coffin corner back there that really doesn't tie itself to...
It's about 80.
About 81 units.
About 81 units.
80 units was max is what they came up with. And it is a coffin corner back there that doesn't tie really well into anything when it comes to commercial. As you look at the property.
So, are they looking at townhomes or are they looking at a retirement center?
Townhomes is what they, they have at the Planning Commission asked to be written as part of that. And so, yes, they are two-story townhomes, anywhere from four to six units with a double-car garage in them. And again, more like a residential.
So, that precludes the care center?
If the care center didn't go in, it would be 80 units. If the care center went in, you'd divide that down to about 50 or 60, I think 60 units.
Well, I think the care center could go in without making any changes.
That's my question, yeah.
But then again, you're talking about traffic and other things like that, you know.
So, that's a permitted use in the commercial zone?
It is, it is. And it does create... You look at it, you know, in terms of traffic, in terms of studies, and we've done a lot of studies, you know, house tops promote commercial.
Right.
And it does bring income to the free. I know there's been arguments either way, but over the years, it does bring income. And, and it does bring income to the free, I know there's been arguments either way, but over the years, it does bring income into the city. House tops bring income to the city. And I don't, I think in terms of residents, if I was a residence, I'd prefer having, instead of some type of commercial back there, I'd, I'd prefer having townhomes in my, as my neighborhood.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel?
Make a motion, we go out of public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we're out of public hearing again.
Still have my motion for denial of the ordinance eighteen dash four.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
You have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, this is a roll call vote?
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye, for deny.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Just wanna clarify, all the ayes were for denial.
Correct.
That was the motion.
Correct.
Okay, having said that, then the, obviously, the public hearing requirements associated with the moving community commercial to R4 is negated. So I don't think we have a requirement to, to pursue that. I say we go into general public comments. Okay, this particular time is open for any conversation, any comments, anything you want to discuss with the, with the city council. If you would like, please step up to the microphone and just give us your name and address. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is David Fasky. I'm a resident of Roy and a property owner. I live at fifty-one twenty-one South, twenty-one seventy-five West. The reason I came here this evening was to address the issue of the parking at the Roy Rec Center complex and the high school.
Okay.
I am a annual member of the Rec Center, and this last year, I understand that the school has taken on three hundred new students, and the school is selling parking passes to everybody that is a member, or that goes to the school. They've oversold it, and I can't, when I go to the Rec Center, I can't get a parking spot. I'm paying between my membership and the taxes that I'm paying to the school system, I'm paying upwards of eight hundred dollars, and I can't get a parking spot. I know that there are some, some plans in the process right now to fix this problem, but I just wanted to address my concerns as, as a member of the Rec Center and as a member of, you know, the city. I have here some paperwork that shows my taxes, I don't know if you're interested in it or not, but I brought proof. I know that it's a work in progress, but it's also a problem every day. There's sometimes they're double-parked, and yesterday they were triple-parked, so there's no place to park over there.
Thank you for your comments. Counsel, any comments? Jason, you may have an idea?
Yeah, and Mayor and counsel, David's exactly right, that there is an issue over there. What I can do maybe with the school principal, Principal Kirk, he's a good guy, and just maybe have him, you know, send out messages to the students that says, hey, do not double-park, don't triple-park, I mean, that'll help a little bit. But if we can get the school's participation to help us with that, because we do have a lot of people that use that complex that are having the same issues.
Manager, they do, they do patrol that, I know, 'cause I just got a ticket there.
Oh, perfect.
For being parked without a permit.
Do, do the parking stalls that, that are on the south side that face the complex, are they marked complex only?
Can we do that? That's what I was just gonna ask. Can we designate some parking stalls for the complex?
I think that'll have to be a relationship that we build with the school district and ask them if we can maybe designate.
Can we have that strong conversation?
Yes, yes.
Because I think, I mean, if we're going to be partners here, and I mean, the school district is using the swimming, you know, the, the pool and everything, you know, for the school's use, that I think there needs to have that conversation that, do you know what I mean? Kind of tip for tat, you're helping you, we're helping you.
If there's like ten stalls or whatever there is, and I think there's a few on the, the other side that face east, you know, can we allocate ten stalls or something to complex only?
Could those be specific times even of the day?
Yeah, so we're talking a designation for specific parking for the complex. I will get with the Roy High tomorrow.
How would that be monitored? So.
Here's the reality of it, I've seen whose perspective you couldn't.
That's what I was just starting to think, we could do that, but how would we know if a kid is parked there or not, or who it's supposed to be? Yeah.
Kid takes it down, parks in the spot, no one knows if it's a person in the complex or not.
That's right. I'd also like to add that, my first, I first addressed the staff at the Rec Center, and they said they have no control over it. I understand that.
Right.
The property belongs to the school as far as the parking lot goes. So I addressed the issue with one of the administrators at the school, and I was remedi, immediately referred to speak to the city council. So they, they're, what I understand, they're not, they're not open to discussion about that, so.
Could the complex issue like a pass when they issue a, you know, your membership? And then you get like a parking pass that you can like put on your, on your dashboard or something?
Yeah, I'll come up with the solution. I am, I'm pretty, I know the problem and the issue, so I'll get with the Roy High, I'll get with our rec department, and we'll come up with the solution, and I'll have an email out to you by the end of the week. And if you would like, I could see you on the email too, David.
Right, I mean, we're trying to, to see.
Right, I realize.
Plans on what we want to do for the complex, but that is going to be, you know, an ongoing discussion. It's not something that's gonna be taken care of right now. So I think in the short term, we know that we've had this problem, especially with the increase of students at Roy High, it has created more of an issue with the parking up there, so I think we need to see if they're willing to work with and have that conversation.
Yeah, and if, David, if, if you got an email or contact number, if we can get that to Morgan, we'll get your information, and then we'll just have her follow up with you on what we can resolve. Does that sound good?
That sounds excellent. Anything is better than nothing.
That's right, and it is a problem, I agree with you. I think we all know that it's an issue.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other ideas, please? Your name and address, please.
Trish Hegland, forty-two seventy-one South, twenty-nine seventy-five West. My concern is the roundabout on forty-eight hundred. I feel like it's not safe for those that are coming from the park onto forty-eight hundred. We've got the two lanes, so we're crossing two lanes to get around and go up the hill. People don't slow down to fifteen miles an hour when they take that roundabout. It's like I'm going straight, not have the right-of-way, and they just zoom through. But my concern is, why can't we just have the turn lane, a right turn lane, and then it ends at the turn, instead of going the double lane all the way down?
Honestly, I was, when it was proposed and stuff, I don't remember the two lanes, and I've kind of thought the same thing with the two lanes kind of being a little different, because most roundabouts don't have them. Okay, well, ours in the city don't have them, I should say, that Steve's gone, some roundabouts have two lanes. This is the first one in our city that has two lanes and just on one side.
Right, right, just one side.
Yeah.
Really, it was Joe Perrin, our traffic engineer, that we hired on contract, made, it helps the traffic flow that way, to have both those lanes there for train, for cars, being able to both get into forty-eight hundred and also turn right on thirty-one hundred. That was the whole purpose of it, and I, I'm right there, I live right there every day, I'm, to be honest with you, to me, I'm in favor of, always have been.
I love the roundabout, love it.
And ultimately, it comes down to citizens learning how to maneuver the roundabout. Most are doing that now, some still don't know how to do it and get used to it. You've probably seen it, I see it.
Well, most of the vehicles are taking two lanes, taking both lanes.
Oh, when they come around.
Around that.
The people have to just be patient, yield the right-of-way, this is the, as it says in the, let them go, make a move, get into the roundabout.
But you're crossing two lanes of traffic.
You are, you do.
That's the design or how it works.
Yeah, yeah.
Did we, I remember us having a conversation a while ago about putting in our newsletter when we started to issue more roundabouts in our city, about kind of putting a roundabout. Yeah, rules or, yeah, when you yield, when you cross, when you do all that, did we, I don't remember us doing that in our newsletter.
Yeah, I don't know if we did, but Morgan's writing it down right now.
Chief, do you have, is there like something for roundabout etiquette? Did we have it? We did.
That's fine, we got room, we can do it.
But then everybody has to read it.
That is very true.
Here's the reality, working the driver's license, we have a half a page dedicated to that.
Because they are more popular now.
What about a flashing speed limit sign as you enter that?
Oh. I don't know, on that one.
Hey, no, no ideas about that there.
No, I'd rather have it on twenty-five.
Well, I think, I think your point would be is, is that it's an awareness issue. And if the key is, is that we can try to make it safe, then it has to be through awareness and helping people to make right choices. I guess, Chief, are we seeing any, any more accidents at that location than typically we see in other roundabouts in the city?
No, in fact, roundabouts are famous for being really safe, and, I mean, that's why we use them is, they're, yeah, they're, I think it's something like, accidents are cut about sixty percent at a roundabout, and fatalities are cut eighty-five percent in roundabouts, so. They work around the world, it's just people getting used to using them.
Yeah. Okay, well, Jason, I think the action item from this conversation would be is, is to add more comment into the newsletter and see if we can address it that way, but in all fairness, let's not exclude, excuse Councilman Paul's point, if it helps to, to put maybe one of those solar-driven signs out there that just helps people to recognize they need to get down to the right speed to get through there, that may make it a little easier for people coming into that roundabout from this side. We just need to be aware that there might be some other options available to us, but I think from this discussion, we can start with, let's put some comments in the newsletter, and then let's see how that works. If we still get comments, then we need probably come back and do something a little different.
The speed going westbound's significantly higher than the speed going south, or eastbound, and I think it's because you have those two lanes, and you're right, people try to maneuver both lanes so they can take it as straight as possible.
Well, a little faster too, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that a solid line, Chief?
Yeah, it is, it's a so.
No, it's a dotted line, I think, that one.
It's a dotted.
So they can make a turn in there.
Yeah, that's true, so they can cross, make turns.
Okay. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, we'll walk out of the public comment session, let's, let's go ahead and deal with the city manager report. Jason?
Okay, in January, we had Irma come and do a presentation, so Irma covers liability, I'm laughing at Saxton.
He's laughing at you, not me.
Is, they cover liability, workers' comp, and property. So, we currently have Irma for our liability and liability only. We don't use it for our property, and property is buildings or vehicles, and then we use Utah's workers' comp. So we had a, we had a presentation by the trust, the Utah Local Government Trust, yesterday. And Jill and Matt and Andy and I sat in this meeting, and here's kind of some of the unique differences between the two. Right now, we still have a liability with Irma, because how it works is we pay Irma a, a fee, a yearly fee. And then if there was a situation, an incident occurred, and we're liable, then instead of them just taking on that liability, we're actually paying it back to them, so we pay it back. Is that a good model, is it not? That's not for me to decide. I don't like to pay it back. If we have an insurance group, we pay them a fee, we want them to take care of things. There are two hundred and fifteen cities that belong to the trust and sixteen to Irma. We are one of the Irma sixteen. You can see the trend, it's moving away from liability, right? We don't want liability, that's why we have an insurance company take on the liability for the city. It's actually cheaper for us to go to the trust as well. So, you know, some significant differences, my recommendation is we go to the trust. That's, I think, in the best interest of the city, and I think we also pay another third party for our property. We could really clean it up. We're gonna pay less for liability and property than we're currently paying now, and we don't have two different entities providing that for us, so that's gonna be cleaned up a lot. Also, you know, some of our legal questions that Andy may ask, some of the attorneys, currently, we then get billed by Irma or those attorneys for our inquiries. This, they would not, this is part of it, that's, that's what they do, that's some of their services, so we wouldn't be paying that out either. So, if you're okay with it, I don't need a motion or anything like that, we can just make that switch and move. But we do have a year, in the contract, we do have to do a year notice to Irma. We're gonna look at the language, Andy's gonna look at the language, that's another thing that's kind of, I'm not really in favor of to lock someone in for a year, especially if we're liable, and we still are liable today. So if something happens in two months, we're liable for it, and we want to get rid of that liability. So Andy's gonna look at the contract, can we get out July first, and can we start with the trust July first? Or can we, do we have to start with the trust July of nineteen, a year from now? We're gonna look into that. I would like to get out of it, because that whole year, we could accrue a liability, and now we're paying that liability back for five years, so it's clean. Just kind of wanted you guys to be aware of it, that that's what we're looking at, and that's the direction we're gonna go, and it is in the best interest of the city.
Comments?
Mayor, I've met with the trust in Irma before, and the trust seems top-notch, everything that they do is good, and it's a value for the city to save money and still getting those same rates and/or better rates, so it makes good business sense.
Okay, good comment.
The budget process is in full swing. So a week from today, I meet with the department directors, we're gonna have a little two-day retreat here in Bountiful and North Salt Lake on the thirteenth and fourteenth. We're gonna go over the budget collectively and together and transparent with each department head, so we're excited to do that. So that'll be next week. I have your, the council's part of the budget, so we'll put kind of those together. Once we do that, then we'll meet again with the council to go over, you know, another budget session to show you guys and present to you the overall budget for your recommendation and approval.
Just for the record, the approval process more than likely will happen in June, but there could be at least one or a couple of workshops that we'll work through just to make sure we're prepared to look at that. So you'll have plenty of chance to get through the, the budget document, but plan sometime in June where the council will meet and have to approve that budget.
Well, I would like to probably meet before June. I would like the first council meeting in June, everything to be complete, finalized and done. You guys good with it, staff is good with it, so we're not pushing this to the very last minute, especially for Matt and I's first budget, we want this to be a success. I know I got a lot riding on this budget, so we want it transparent, open, out, and every, yeah, and everybody done with it well before June.
Yeah, and I think the way we can do that effectively would be is just, we'll call a workshop and where we can sit down and actually get into the, into the bowels of this, of this particular document, so.
Right.
Okay.
Great news for Roy City and a ramp grant. We were successfully awarded a ramp grant for eighty-five thousand dollars to work on the parking lot in a facility on Six Thousand South and the trail. So that's gonna be excellent for our Roy residents that utilize that trail, they can park up there, easy access on and off. So, yeah, super good news. So Travis and his staff that wrote the grant, you know, kudos to them. They were the ones that were the, the masterminds behind it. Basement update, if you haven't seen the basement, I highly recommend you go look at it. It is currently all sheet rocked and ready for mud and tape, so the basement project is going well. The bathroom project up here should be done seven to ten days, the full gut and remodel. They do have all the plumbing fixed, and they got it tiled and painted, so we're moving along quickly on that. This is kind of a kudos to the Public Works Department. They have reached out to a group of handicapped kids that would like to come to the Roy Fish Pond and do some fishing, probably be sometime in April. They're actually gonna stock it with fish, and they're gonna be there with them, they're gonna help them fish it and have them have a good time. So, you know, I just wanted to tell Ross and his team, good job for reaching out to them. So, you know, I just wanted to tell Ross and his team, good job for reaching out to them and being willing to.
Do you know when that will happen?
No, and I asked Ross about it, he wasn't quite sure.
Will you give us an awareness of that?
Absolutely, I will. Yep, you got it. Okay, sorry, I got just a couple more things. Rocky Mountain Power, we had Rocky Mountain Power come in through a grant program and replace a lot of our lights. And they changed them to an LED light. So we had several throughout the city. We're looking at probably spending about fourteen thousand dollars to do those lights. So for example, one project was the municipal building. The municipal building would have been fifty-eight hundred dollars for, for them to come and do all of them. And Roy City only had to pay eleven hundred dollars for this. So we had about nine or ten spots in the city that are high-traffic areas that we use a lot of power. And it's going to save us about three thousand dollars a month, three thousand a month on energy savings. So, we're trying to go green, we're trying to be, we're trying to be good. Okay, forty-eight hundred south and nineteen hundred west. Forty-eight hundred south, nineteen hundred west. There is, UDOT is trying to purchase some small little easement along each corner. Roy actually owns the corner on the east side of forty-eight and nineteen, and we actually own it on, so, so the east side, north and south of forty-eight, we own that. So Dawson owns that piece of property, but we actually have about seventy or eighty square feet. We have a little easement on both sides that they want to move the sign, the streetlight, back a little bit so the handicap access, if people are trying to cross, for wheelchair access. You know, according to our policy, if it's that small of an increment, we can go ahead and approve that. I just wanted you guys to understand what we were doing. It's literally probably the size of this little council spot right here, it's teeny. But what they, what, what's gonna happen is, when they move the light away, they're able to create more of a, a walk-through across the street for wheelchair access and ADA compliant. So, I mean, it's a perfect, it's easy, it's a no-brainer. And I think we're gonna get six hundred bucks each side of the corner, so. I think I've talked long enough. Anything for me?
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's jump into Mayor and Council report. Council, any comments, ideas? Anything you want to share?
I can let you know that Roy Day's planning is starting. Haven't quite pinned down the theme yet, but we're kind of going with military appreciation, something military strong. It's also in conjunction with our new north park, because the playground has got a military theme. So we're trying to pull that in, because that will be ready also this year. We're working on some other things and stuff. So that's kind of the theme that we're going with Roy Day's this year. So I'll let you know as plans start coming of where we're at.
Perfect.
Mayor, on that big topic, Carlene, former Hill Air Force Base, possibly see connections for possible flyer.
That's, yeah, he's been working on it.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be, that'd be a nice addition. Okay, other thoughts? Let me just share a couple of things if I can. There's a proposal by the residents about some concerns with the stop sign on four thousand south and nineteen hundred. Chief, I appreciate you providing me some detailed information. Chief Marino basically identified, we had seventy-three accidents or incidents at that location. Specifically coming up four thousand onto nineteen hundred, taking that right-hand turn, there's a stop sign. And the concern, at least the residents had, would be is there's a nice box, electric box sitting right there is an, is an, in my opinion, obstruction between the driver. So they literally have to pull out a little bit to get, look around that box so they can proceed. The issue that, and Jason, as soon as Ross gets us some information, somebody mentioned earlier that it was actually a yield and not a stop at one point.
Yeah, it was, and I did talk with Ross, and UDOT changed it from a yield to a stop because they were having a lot of accidents.
Okay, so.
Whether it's a yield or a stop, we're still.
So by changing it back, maybe some people still think it's a yield when it's supposed to be a stop. And what it is, is there're just a little bit of rear-end collisions going on there. It's not so much collisions going, you know, southbound traffic, and they're running into them, it's the collision right there.
It's the rear ending.
Yes.
Yeah, the rear end.
Yeah, eastbound. So obviously, we're still working through that, but just be aware, there is a concern there, and there might be other solutions to that. Jason, we did send a request to ask you to look and see about a sidewalk. Ross is not here, obviously. This is specifically at seventy-five, excuse me, fifty-seven twenty-five south. This is just kind of inbound on the south side of Roy Elementary.
I know right where you're talking, I did talk with Ross about it. Ross did go out and look at it and said that we do have some sidewalk funding available for certain parts in the community. And that one definitely makes sense because of the kids walking to and from the school. So we're on it and we'll take care of it, and they're gonna, they're gonna curb, I think it was the west side.
That'd probably be the right side, yeah, that'd be perfect. Okay, yeah, if he can just get on your list, I know you have projects like that, that's perfect. Dave, thanks for the comment, it was excellent. We did get FAA approval for that flyover. We got one more piece we have to get, we have to submit the form to the Air Force. Carlene would hope to have that done this coming week. And then we'll see if the Air Force will give us that flyover for our parade.
Then we can put it in our plans.
Yeah. I will indicate to you, we were able to meet with the Woodbury Corporation President. We're trying to find some answers to where we're looking to figure out what to do with Woodbury Properties in Roy. The conversation went well, at least we got good contacts, and they know we're seriously interested to find solutions. So we'll continue that conversation. And with that, I will indicate to council members included, we're looking to put a theater in Roy. It's important to us, we've made a commitment to work all the amends. We've got two possible theater companies that are considering it. We're gonna work these out as best we can, but if that's, we think that'd be a nice addition to Roy. So we're gonna keep pushing it until we, until we make that happen. Any other comments or anything else we'd like to share? Anything from Ms. Smith?
No, everything sounds great to me.
Okay. Perfect, okay, let's do some follow-up items then, if you could. We'd like just to have a little follow-up about Roy Hooper boundary adjustments. This is not a decision, this is just more information. I believe, if I'm correct, on the twentieth of March, the council will be expected to make a decision on that. And this would be a good time just to make sure that if there's any things or just follow up where we are on that, so we're ready for that. Jason, who's going to discuss, just give us a little update on where that adjustment, boundary adjustment is?
Okay, so the mayor, Andy, and Steve and I met on this probably a week, week and a half ago. We talked about some of the, the boundary line adjustments. And then I think more along, more along the lines of like property use, you know, do, will they have existing property use? And then how are we gonna compare that to the annexation that comes in in January? You know, we're gonna kind of treat them the same. So I talked with Steve and Andy a little bit about it today. And Steve, I don't know if you want to share a few thoughts on that?
You said if I wanted to. For the Hooper boundary line adjustment, we're, again, it was a concern of zoning. And property rights and animal rights is really what it comes down to. When we, when I began looking at what Hooper zoning is, what they allow, what Roy zoning is, what we allow in the essence of, of animal rights, there are seven parcels that we're, we're talking about. Under Hooper's own zoning, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, four of those parcels are currently non-conforming to their own Hooper city ordinances. Some of it's lot size, lot width. Some of it is, one of them just can't have animals, period, they don't have enough land in the first place. However, if we, we switch them over to an RE twenty zone, only one becomes truly non-conforming, both lot width, lot area. One becomes non-conforming by point, or one point zero five feet for lot width. Which, again, is easy to put down, you can record it, it's a legal non-conforming, you know, those rights continue. The only issue is really animals. No one's come forward to say, hey, I've got ten horses on the property, so I'm not sure how to, how to approach that until I, I find out the numbers. One thing that Hooper has is, anybody that's twenty thousand square, well, you have to have forty thousand square feet to meet the zoning. But you can have, if you have twenty thousand square feet, you can have a, an animal right if there's a conditional use. No one has a conditional use. Hooper's already dictated or told, there's no conditional uses down there. So again, it's for those who have forty thousand square feet or larger, what are the number of, of animals that are down there? So those are things that we have to find out. Those would be fairly easy to, to figure out, rights-wise of what they, what they can and can't. As far as the Weber County situation, we are trying to keep, treat both of them fairly. How do, you know, how do we comply with what they currently have to what we've got on both sides? Weber's a lot different. Weber has two zones that we're dealing with, well, three, but manufacturing is, is manufacturing, so that one was fairly straightforward. Weber has an A-one zone, which we don't have, and they have what's called an RE fifteen, very similar to our RE twenty. Both the A-one and the RE fifteen allow animals. You have to, again, meet such, so, your parcel has to be so big, yada, yada, yada. So the thought is, when I sat down with, with Jacqueline, is we're just gonna create an RE fifteen zone. Well, why don't I put it in the RE twenty? It's because most of those parcels in that zone only have fifteen thousand square feet parcels. I don't want to make them non-conforming if I don't have to. So still give them very similar animal rights as RE twenty, but create a different zone for them. All it is, is creating a column within our, our ordinance, allowing them to be conforming for lot size, lot width. And then we can figure out animal rights and stuff as we go. The A-one, what they're allowed at animals is very similar to what we allow with the RE twenty. So it's gonna be a, a good fit for them. Then it just, the last meeting I had with Jacqueline, it's more down to the nitty-gritty. Business licensing, fire inspections, cost. So those things, we, you know, we've got time to find truth, common and, and go through it, so. Don't know if that answers the question.
Comments, Council?
Sounds like you got a due diligence, I mean, we did promise the county would work the best. You're working that, you're keeping on doing that, great. As the Hooper one goes, doesn't seem like there's any issues.
Well, I mean, again, it's just how many.
Right, you know, so we might be down to one parcel instead of whatever. Just to make the change from one point five to RE twenty, sounds pretty simple, so, good job.
Okay. Okay. Any, oh, I think you're gonna talk a little bit, Jason, about the service line warranty.
Yep, correct.
Okay.
So the service line warranty is the presentation we had a couple council meetings ago for the National Leagues of Cities, the guy came. So I'm, I'm kind of, I'm torn both directions, I really am. And I think the biggest, I think the biggest concern that Andy and I both have is using Roy City as a, a way to advertise it, say we're supporting it. And I think that's the biggest issue. I did talk with the, I did call and talk with Orem, and I talked with the Orem City Manager about it. And, you know, they had some concerns about that upfront, and the citizens had major concerns with it. When they sent it out, he said our phones rang off the hook for the first couple of months about, is this the real deal? Why is Orem City on it? Is Orem City sponsoring it? Is Roy City sponsoring it? That makes me a little hesitant. The other thing that makes me hesitant is, we only have two cities in the state of Utah that currently do it. So. Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, it's gonna end up being your guys' call, we listened to it, we looked at it, Andy looked at it. I think Bob had some research done on it that he sent me an email too. And I don't know if Bob, you want to comment on it? But, you know, I just think we are cautious on having our city's name to their own flyer that's sent out. And then we're just gonna get a lot of questions and, you know.
Yeah, 'cause they're gonna forget down the road who wrote the insurance policy, and they're gonna remember Roy City's name on it, and they're gonna get, call us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's been proven, like I said, I don't think it's been proven yet. I mean, there's only, like you said, a couple of cities, so I don't know if we're, I think we're kind of, yeah, rushing a little bit to put, to get into it until we can see more data on it.
Yeah.
You know, how it's worked better in other cities.
You heard any comment on other cities looking at it?
So right now, only Clearfield and Orem currently use them. Other than reaching out to other cities to see maybe Jen, if they've been contacted by him. And if so, why did you not do it? Because we, we know it's only two. So I guess I can maybe try and reach it out.
Or would they tell us who they have reached out to, or who have, who they're, who is?
North Ogden, they've reached out to North Ogden, and they haven't rolled in yet, okay? Not sure they will, but, but at least they have been approached.
Let me throw this out there, I mean, you say it's not proven, which is not true. Hundreds of cities throughout the nation do this program.
Just in Utah.
In reality, if you handle a few phone calls, it's all, my opinion, guess what? It's an opportunity for homeowners, business owners to get insurance on a expensive break if it comes. There's no harm in filing the city, there isn't. Our only buy-in is, yeah, we say that we agree that this is a good program, that's all.
Question, if, if we endorse it, though, aren't we on the hook for something?
Yes.
I mean, you know, I just.
Yeah, if there was a claim, they could tie the city in.
Yeah, same thing with Boys and Girls Club, we endorse them, there's no, it's the same type of thing, if that's your worry, how the, same comment.
Well, it's a, it's a deep-pocket issue, and we'd be, we'd be on the hook.
Yeah, and one thing Orem said too, you remember how he gave you an option? You know, they charge the city a couple, a couple more dollars, or the resident a couple more dollars, and then they give that kickback to us, and then we can use it for street projects or anything like that, but.
Orem chose not to do that, is that correct?
Yeah, they did not do that, because then it looks like, not only is the city trying to sponsor it, but they're getting kickbacks no matter what, if they're turning it back into the, the citizens, it doesn't look that way. It looks like we're sponsoring it and that we're benefiting from. And he, so that's why Orem chose not to do that part.
Let me ask you this, Jason.
Yeah.
Did they say they want to get out of it, or are they still happy with it?
I, I don't know, and I'll have to, I'll have to call back and ask. I didn't ask him if he was happy with it, you know, he did say, oh, what was the number, Bob? I think they had like four or five thousand residents.
It's a pretty significant amount.
Yeah.
We talked to the Clearfield mayor, and he said half the residents do it, so it's, it's a good, it's an option for people to have.
Yep.
You might like it, you might not, but have somebody the option to use yourself.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm okay, but, I mean, whatever you guys want to do, we can put it back on as a, you know.
Well, this is, this is a discussion, so we're not making any commitments. But I think the question from the council then would be is, do you want the, you want the city to go ahead and just do a little more research, pull some more information together? Because at some point in time, we've got to make a decision, yes or no.
Yeah.
Yes, that's fair.
So your action would be to go ahead and start, just gather more information? Make contact with Orem and Clearfield again, and let's see if we can get some more detail. And then see, and I think from a legal perspective, Andy, I think I'm hearing that suggests is, is just look at culpability? If we find ourselves somewhat culpable in terms of this process?
There's some questions on the contract too.
Okay. Okay.
Call the National League and say, okay, let us know, have you had suits against you, so for how much, you know, the city.
Right.
Okay.
I, I'm a little curious about the advertising too, that you, or, or what you alluded to as the advertising. How much does Roy City have to be involved in saying that this, or do we just say this is an opportunity, this is an option?
Yes.
Without it looking like Roy City is endorsing it?
Yeah.
No, their, their marketing model is, is they want the endorsement of the city. They probably will, they will not, best I can tell from my research, they will not go into a city without the city's endorsement.
I see, okay.
Yeah, and if worst-case scenario, we can just give them Andy's cell phone number.
We only have one contact him from me.
Okay, anything else? Let me just recap a couple of action items, make sure they're for the record. We're gonna go ahead and make contact with Roy High School principal and see if there's some opportunities to deal with the parkings. We also want to look at putting some comments in the newsletter that helps us with the issues with roundabouts, more education along that line. The city owes the council the dates in terms of when the Public Works is gonna have the Fish Pond event. And then the final one was, is that you'll gather more information on the service line warranty and allow the council then to take some more information. and allow the council then to take some more information into a decision. Fair enough, okay. Did we miss anything, council? Anything from our school?
Nope, not recently, everything's going well, and everything is going great in Roy City.
Okay, well, keep up the great work, okay? Let us know how we can help, okay? Glad to have you here.
Thank you for having me.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, mayor, that we adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're outta here, thank you, thanks for your attendance.
State, state, council, Bell Photography is set up in our office.
Okay.